We have an addition under four, support services from John Bishop, human resources, Suzy Swain. We have an item B, so approval of the Goldenrod will be A, and the new B will be to approve the Florida Virtual School Franchise Agreement for the state of Florida school district. There's going to be a change in four, or six, rather. We're going to add a new six, finance, Mr. Mullen. Item A, approve the Apple Statement of Change Order. That would make Attorney Legal Matters become seven. That would make any other business that needs to come before the board, eight. And a German, become nine. Everybody square on that?
Do we have the franchise agreement? Is that, is that on the, on the website?
The...
Approve the Florida Virtual School Franchise Agreement, we're adding that to the agenda, right?
Right.
Is that, has that been given, provided to us in the...
No, that's, uh, that's... Uh, I don't, is it in Word doc?
I'm not seeing it off the top of my head. I mean, off the...
On the top of your computer.
Thank you.
So we're not doing item D, is it not? Okay, so item B, scratch the virtual franchise, will be to approve James Gerlach to be named supervisor of facilities and maintenance with effective date of October 28th, 2020. And it's coming in. All right.
So we're not going to have the FLBS, but we're going to have the other two items.
We're going to have the, just the other two.
Or the other two hires.
Okay.
So can you just go that with me again then? So item B that's here is not being added to the agenda, we're adding a hire?
Item, item B is going to be the hire for Mr. Gerlach.
So we're adding the hire of Mr. Gerlach.
Right. And then, I guess, the franchise is going to come up at a later date, somewhere floating around.
Now, they also gave me an appointment for Dave Vincent's district, please. Is that not going to be included also?
That was last...
That was last year.
I apologize.
All right.
Yes.
With that, I'm going to ask that we adopt the...
Wait, what? We have opening exercises.
Oh, that's right.
I, I wanted to get the agenda straight.
Got it, that's right.
Before we did start it.
Sorry.
Because I was afraid somebody would do that before I could change, because we will approve the adopted, the changed adopted, uh, agenda. Mrs. Bryan.
Many of you know Mrs. Harold, my daughter. She... Hello? All right. Many of you know Mrs. Harold, my daughter. She inherited my poetry obsession. And she called me the other day, "Mom, I, I have to have the oyster poem." And I said, "Well, you have it." "I can't find it anywhere." I said, "Okay, I'll get it to you, honey." She said, "This teacher, she wants me to do poem with a moral, and what better poem than the oyster poem?" So you guys get that from me today, okay? The oyster. Author unknown. "There once was an oyster whose story I tell, but found that some sin had gotten under his shell. Just one little grain, but it gaited such pain, for oysters have feelings, professors maintain. Now, did he perate the unfortunate fate that led him to such a deplorable state? Did he ball out the government, call an election, cry out to the sea to grant him protection? No, he said to himself as he lay on the shelf, 'If I cannot remove it, I'll try to improve it.'" So the years rolled along, as the years always do, and he came to his ultimate destiny, stew. But the small grain of sand that had bothered him so was a beautiful pearl, all richly aglow. Now this tale has a moral, for isn't it grand what an oyster can do with a small grain of sand? What couldn't we do if we'd only begin with all of the things that get under our skin?
Okay. Let's get into the page.
I collect all the agents to the pie of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Bryan, I just have to say, you still got it. You know, over the years, you've, you kind of, sometimes I feel like we're part of your classroom still. And I see a lot of faces that were looking here, including some former students, that, Ms. Bryan, you still got it.
Okay. Now, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda, Superintendent's agenda. I move to adopt the agenda, Superintendent, the second.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Mr. Dodd, to adopt the agenda with changes as recommended by Superintendent Himmel. Any discussion? Does it favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Citizens' comments. Citizens' comments are reserved for comments on the items requesting approval on the agenda or any other subject at this time. Have any citizens' comments? Have you agreed, cards? Any citizens' comments? Okay, that's called. Moving on. Item three, education services, Dr. Hebert?
I have decided this table for the last month, this is the School Health Services Plan. Ms. Humble is here, so if you have questions or want her to share. Ms. Humble is here. Would like her to share some of the additions that I know were added to the services plan.
I think, I think Mr. Dodd, it was really the name of...
Yeah, we added exactly Mark Mack, and that, I see that's in there, and also clarified the issue in reference to the impalers.
Okay. I think that was all that you had requested.
Move approval then of the 2020 through 2022 School Health Service Plan.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mrs. Bryan, to approve the 2020, 2022 School Health Services Plan. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero. And I have to thank Mr. Dodd for, for mentioning that, that young man's name, because I think that was really an important addition. I remember sitting with you when, during Tallahassee, and his mom was there. School Support Services, Ms. Swain.
Good morning. I ask the board's approval of the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the Goldenrod.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel instructional and support information as listed on the Goldenrod. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the instructional and support recommendations as found on the Goldenrod. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five zero.
I ask the board's approval to, for James Gerlach to be named supervisor of facilities and maintenance with an effective date of October 28th, 2020.
Move approval?
Second. Mr. Kennedy? I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mrs. Powers, to approve James Gerlach as supervisor of facilities instructions effective October 28th of this year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
And I have to, again, give Mr. Stokes credit, I understand this man is working for less. Mr. Stokes is saving us a lot of money.
Yes, 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 they have, he and Mr. Bishop have done some rearranging of the maintenance and facilities department, and it is the additional, the, the difference will be a cost savings to the district, yes.
And then the car, maybe it's a savings.
Absolutely, yes, it is. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda is item five, School Support Services, Risk Management, Mr. Palmer.
Good morning. Up here today to ask for you to approve the retirement plan and administrative services agreement between Citrus County School Board and TSA Consulting Group.
I've got a question. I noticed it's a 16-month contract, I was kind of catchy with the, you know, that's a five-year contract, is that, was that what we've done in the past?
No, sir, it's a little bit different. In the past, we were paying TSA $10,000 a year to provide these consulting services. Now, we pay them nothing.
But the charging plan, is that correct for each member?
No. No, the, the, the groups that are providing services, be it Voya or whatever, are paying those administrative fees, our members are not, and we are not. The fees are coming from, yeah, the fees are coming from the companies themselves, not from our members, not from us.
Okay. Where does the $24 come from?
That would be coming from those companies. Whenever they agree, whenever they sign on Orange County Schools, the companies agree, because they're so large, that they would pay for that, just to have access to it. So the TSA said that you have to do it for everyone at Ford. And they agreed, because they wanted those, that school district so badly. So it's not costing us anything where it was costing us $10,000 a year to have these services.
So, the contract, though, I thought did say $24 a year.
Yeah, well, as I said, but that, but not, not for us.
For, for...
Can we get that in the contract?
Yes, sir, I'll, I'll call them this afternoon.
I mean, doesn't, doesn't the contract say that we will agree to, I'm trying, I'm just going to...
I don't have it right up here with me, but I'll, I'll get ahold of Mr. Robbins this afternoon.
I'm not, I'm delayed.
I thought it said the participant, not us pay.
And we don't pay anything.
Yeah, I thought you were taking out the participant.
Yeah.
Yep, can we just, if you don't mind, since you've got it up, I mean, I don't want, I don't want to hold up if we need to get it approved, but I just want to make sure it's right on the, I'm trying to find where I read that before. I think Ms. Councils also spotted that there, didn't you?
Yeah, but I'm pretty sure the participant, they were in charge of participants, $24 a year.
Not the, not the member, not, not the board.
Not the...
Right.
But we were paying, we were paying per member for compliance services. We now pay zero for compliance services for TSA.
Right, but you're also saying, there it is, it's on the last page, $24 per year billed monthly, per participant count, so that's not correct.
But they're not, it's not billed to us.
Are our participants going to have to pay $24 every year, billed to their account? Okay, so we need to change that.
I'll get with Mr. Robbins today.
I mean, that's, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with, I mean, 60-month thing was a little bit, I was curious about, but if the 20, I mean, I just took it as what they said, $24, but that's not going to be...
No.
I would suggest you consider the modification. Just proveable the modification, that, that, the clarification on that, and as long as the symbol's comfortable with the language of this company's business system, I might have changed.
Yep.
And the five years, you know, I mean, that's locking them in to the provider for five years.
And we've been using TSA for quite a number of years, at least, well, before I got down to risk management. And we've been very happy with their services, as far as the compliance goes, and helping our members, whenever they need to make withdrawals or hardships, or they're changing over plans, they handle all of those, that pay for our compliance.
All right, well, oh, go ahead, Ms. Card.
Yeah, I just have a question on page seven, number five point, five point one, three, and it says the Supreme may be modified amendments or terminated by either party on 60 days written notice to the other party about that no such modification and for termination shall take the liability. It's a termination, what parties are talking about?
No, the agreement's between the school board and TSA consulting.
So it is individual person to be...
No, no, this agreement is, is between the school board and them to provide these consulting services. So if we want to terminate that, we would give them 60 days written notice.
You're not supposed to have contracts over more than a year, unless you can have, you have outplays. It's usually, I usually give 30 days and 60 days, but, and that's fine, just so we can always get out of it.
I see. Thank you. I recognize that as one of Mr. Bradshaw's clauses.
Yeah, I should have too.
Just getting out of there.
Hopefully, we don't have to.
Yes, hopefully not, not for this price, yeah.
All right, so, you know, I'll make the motion to approve this agreement with the modification regarding the investment product provider fees per participant account of $24 per year billed monthly, that, that would be removed.
On, on page eights, where you see the $24.
Yes, that's right, the last page, right, yeah.
The last page.
It's listed on page eight.
No problem, I'll get that squared with me. There shouldn't be any issue.
I have a motion out before, I need a second.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the retirement plan and administrative services agreement between Citrus County School Board and TSA Consulting Group, modified to remove the TSA $24 charge. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We've got a new number, six, finance, Mr. Mullen, you need the Apple Agreement, we have to do that, and you should have, should have, you should have a change order request form in front of you.
Good morning. Do you like me to explain that I can? So when we made the purchase of the, the last purchase of the thousand iPads, a statement of work is completed every time, that lets them know what we need, completed by the professional services company that Apple uses. And there was an oversight, the company, or Apple, I'm not sure, one of the two, did not see the changes I made to the statement of work. And so when we had our call and we went through everything, I, I reminded them, no, I do not need you to put them in Jamf, we handle that. And we do like it when they put them in sequential order according to asset tags, things like that. And so they said they didn't have a problem, but they needed the change order request to have a signature, therefore I bring it before you to ask for a signature.
So there's no cost difference, that is, to me, already it's in terms...
Yes.
They're not, they're not going to be shipped until they get this change order?
That is correct. They will not, they, they have the iPads, they will not assemble them and set them up and ship them until we get this to them.
I, I'll, I'll make the motion, then, it'd be accept the change order, I was looking for the name of it, but, change order, looks like PTO number 1122-3-102974 between Apple and Citrus County School Board.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mrs. Bryan, to approve the change order request form, to be signed by the Citrus County School Board on purchase orders 11223-102974 for the iPad deployment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero. All the sensors, we need them. And last meeting, we were told we were out of iPads, so we need to get them as soon as possible. Next on the agenda, Attorney Legal Matters?
Nothing.
Nothing. Any other business to come before the school board?
It's just a follow-up from an article that we sent in, that was published, and it talks about the school board initiative seeks to preserve integrity in history. And I love the way the article put that, because that's exactly what we were saying, to preserve the integrity in history. The article, I'm definitely issued its favor, and references the fact that we sent a letter to Representative Ralph Kuzmow and Senator Wilkins Simpson. And it goes on to talk about the fact that we just are trying to be sure that American history is, is taught with, with integrity in the, in the school system and every other portion of education. I'll hand this out to you, I may, and there's, oh, there's going to be a, a survey in the paper, or there is a survey right out of the paper, and it's going to be...
And Ms. Powers, I just pulled it up, and it's, it's running almost three to one in favor of, of what you proposed here and, and what the board's been doing, so I think there's a, a strong overwhelming support of this. By the way, if you don't know, Ms. Powers, on the Florida School Board Association's legislative platform, there was a thousand different proposals that were submitted, and there was only less than 30 that were accepted to move forward, and yours was one of them.
Oh, that's the update, he's always ahead of everything.
No, he...
It happened two seconds ago, he's got it now.
But he's vice president of that association now.
Oh, that's right, thanks, he's vice president, and the fact that it is being placed forward, we're very, very happy with that, and I did not know three to one support on that, which is good to know, too, because our count, I think, not, we have the veterans here, we so much support, knowing the history of the United States, knowing the Constitution of the United States, being really able to, to give information on, and I'll just reflect on when I was in, in Europe, and when I was attending school there, the, the students that I attended lived from other countries, and they're from several other countries, they knew our history backwards and forward, and they would ask you a question, if you didn't know, if they wondered about your educational ability. And I remember they asked a question, very upset, because one person did not know who this president of the United States was, and it was a very obscure person, was not a person whose name springs to mind immediately, but I just happened to read a book on this person, so when he asked, this person asked, I knew the answer, not because I was a great scholar, just the fact I read the book on it, just, it had been like it two days ago. So, and he said, oh, well, then you are, you are an educated American about, about your country and your history, but that's what they expect, they expect it about their country and their history, and they expected it of us, of our country, our history, our constitution, that we know it, so, and I, I think that's the right idea. So, that's all I have on it, thank you.
Just that we have the Florida School Board Association this year, normally we have a conference that we go to, this year it's going to be virtual. What has been suggested is that maybe school boards gather at their board office and, and then participate in like a large screen. We did that here with the National School Board Association's meeting. It could be something we do upstairs, where, you know, like the keynote speakers and the others were together in a room, and then in our breakout sessions, we could go into different conference rooms or offices, and then have our, our independent meetings, but that would allow us to do that. And I think if, I think Mr. Bradshaw left for a moment, but if we noticed the event, we, you know, we have no problem being able to do that and be together and have conversation, which actually would even be greater than what we normally get to a conference, because we actually, you know, are then completely noticed.
I like that, because one of the things that you miss on the Zoom meetings is the discussion, and it's going to be December, second and third.
December, second and third, and so I would just, I, I would be willing to do that, I, I think it would be a positive experience for all of us, especially since it's, the worst is, is that we're getting together, and since we can't all be together down there together.
I would just be late on the second, because I have a value adjustment board meeting over at the courthouse, but they don't...
We'll make it work.
It's only about an hour, so I'll miss, miss the president's opening.
So, and it was not difficult staff, all, the only thing we had to do is, I think it's already up there, just have the screen up there, we can log in, and, you know, we'll need to bring our laptops and so forth anyway, you probably, rather than be at home, you know, you can be...
I like it.
I, you know, I wasn't really interested in doing online conferences here myself, I mean, just because of, of, you know, I didn't think I would get the bang for the buck, but I also had a conflict on that Thursday. You know, I would, might consider, I mean, you know, I was a little surprised that FSBA had the registration fee, I think it was same as in the past, as the state...
Well, because they, keep in mind, these virtual conferences are as expensive to operate as, as really almost any of them, having gone through it right now with the, the school board training, I mean, the, I'm sorry, the training for the board of directors, there's a lot that has gone into being able to do it. You still have your keynote speaker, and the cost of that, all of those pieces are still part of that training that we ordinarily would have.
And who is the keynote speaker?
I don't have, I don't have it in front of, I know they were still working on the agendas.
Okay, so, because I hadn't seen the agenda, is the agenda hasn't been posted yet?
I think it has been posted.
Hasn't been posted?
Okay.
So...
But again, we are, we are saving significantly by not having, by doing it virtually, by not having the hotel costs and the travel costs that would ordinarily go along with that, which to me was significant. The, the amount of training and knowledge that we receive as boards is tremendous, it really is a significant amount. And I know all of us have, you know, have supported this in the past, so I, I certainly plan on supporting, because there is a lot of new information, especially now that we have COVID, we have so many things that we...
Well, that was, to me, my question is, is there going to be some topics, when I, I had looked at the, at the suggested agenda, whatever, I hadn't seen those topics on, what I was interested, you know, if that's going to be...
Well, there was ones that I was certainly interested in, I, I mean, you know, I think that's each, each board member's got to decide whether there's something for them. To me, there, there was always something. Sitting in those meetings, both down there and then also, I was in breakout sessions during the board of directors conference, there was just so much conversation back and forth. One of them that I was surprised with had to do with UV-related mitigation of, you know, of HVAC, and it was interesting, you know, Mr. Bishop, there was a lot of districts that had struggles, saying, I just can't, I can't support the cost of that, but there became other solutions that were being talked about as board members, that I would have probably never been able to have that information or known that, and also known what other districts were doing, and why they decided it either was or wasn't good for them.
There's no doubt that FSBA provides a lot of big training and meaningful conferences that we've been to, it's been...
I know that there aren't as many breakout sessions as we normally get if we were there physically, there, there are fewer choices for us to go to.
Right, and that didn't have anything on Thursday that you showed me, I didn't see you the Thursday schedule, but I guess the question would be for Mr. Bradshaw on how that would look, if we were to do that, you know, what we'd be, how would we go about doing that?
Would we just notice as a workshop to have our board, if we, you were out there, I, I was suggesting that our virtual FSBA meeting, we could potentially hold upstairs collectively, since we can't go down to the conference, but then we probably want to notice that meeting as like a workshop or something for those two days. You know, the press would of course be available, and any of the members of the public, but largely we're, we would just then have that upstairs, and at least we wouldn't necessarily have to do it individually, then at home, we could then have conversations together if we needed.
I, I want you to say this way, do you want, you're never going to get in trouble noticing it like that? And then would that be, Ms. Powers, on that schedule, was, is that a, is that a full day on Wednesday, or how would we...
Yeah, I didn't notice that it didn't do, maybe the December second starts at 7:30 a.m. and ends at two, the last chairmanship executive meeting's 2:45.
On Wednesday?
On Wednesday. And it's about, it was about the same, I didn't notice that it only printed one day. But it's online now.
So the breakout sessions, how would we work that? Mr. Kennedy suggested that we... Mr. Kenny suggested that we go into different rooms.
You would have to go into a different room.
But the public, I mean, that'd be open to the public too. They can join me. There won't be.
I mean, I think if we're going to notice it, we've got to notice it all, right? As far as.
And you're not going to be in there being able, you're not going to be in another room talking to another board member about something that could potentially come in front of the board. So you could go by yourself, but if you're going to notice it, you might as well just notice it.
Well, that way if two or three of us went to the same breakout session.
It's the safest way, yes.
And then we could, we could have a discussion.
Absolutely.
I mean, there is some benefit for that, there's no doubt, if we could have that kind of discussion. I think that was Mr. Kenny's.
Yep, that was it.
Yeah, I had one thing that I talked a little bit to Superintendent about, but into Mr. Mullin dealing with child needs services, family needs services petitions, and I noticed that, I'm glad that we continue to get the information, Ms. Hambos sends that to us on arrests and Baker Acts and those things. But, you know, with the concern over mental health and some of the issues that we've seen with some students, I think that that's still an avenue that I wish that we would pursue is taking a child before the court. If there is, you know, a dire need for that, that we get on that quickly and file that petition and start that process. And so it's been a little bit, I've been a little bit concerned about some of the Baker Acts that have come forward. And I just think that, you know, we need to keep that mental health out there and sometimes rather than, you know, continuing in a long process, if we can get a child before a judge quickly, that could really help in some of these cases.
And we mentioned before, turn around, you mentioned before that the perceptions that, Doug, your perception from, say, a law enforcement perspective and my perception from a mental health perspective could be a little bit different, but we're discussing them between us and we can reach a consensus on that.
I too share the concerns because we have had, I think, uptick in Baker Acts. And of course, we expected it with COVID and distance learning coming back with choices and things like that. But I know student services have been really stressed, so thanks for helping our kids.
And I think the concern we continue to have is that elementary age on the Baker Acts. I mean, I thought over the last week or so, I think all of us probably, our eyebrows get raised every time we see that.
Mr. Ryan?
Good. Go. Well, we're all looking forward to SACS meetings. They start again in November and we're going to probably Zoom them. And I just want to look forward to the resolution that we will never allow the word Zoom in a school's. And I'll be glad to sign that at any given time. But the Zoom meetings are working. I was absolutely pleasantly surprised on the calendar committee. I thought, how are we going to do this calendar committee Zooming? And I knew these little breakout sessions, but it was, it was so much fun because we were, we thought, well, we'll just keep everything a secret, you know, because before, Lindy could hear what we were discussing over in our room and then, you know, she would do that. But we had a real good member on our committee that learned how to break into the other two groups. So we were watching, but we, we had a really very successful calendar meeting and we Zoomed it, and I never thought it would be possible. And it was kind of, it was kind of neat. So it's coming at you as soon as Amy finishes upstairs with it. I think we gave her three choices. I'm looking forward to my Zooming SACS meetings. Love the calendar meeting and we're going to move on to hopefully the end of the year and the end of the course. Anything else to come before the board? If nothing else before our special meeting, then we will adjourn the special meeting. Do we need a break before workshop?
No.
Nope? Okay, then we will go right into our workshop.
Thank you for asking.
Always thinking of you, Mr. Ryan. First is Mr. Dixon, we've got a couple policies to look at. And this is a workshop, so we're not looking for any motions to approve it for information purposes.
Yes, ma'am. We have a few. There's one that I would like to get some additional clarification on and bring back to you at the next workshop, but when I get to that, I'll explain. The first one is a policy 3.40, safety and secure schools. This is a revision to reflect changes in Florida statute and clarification in section three, subsection five eighty-nine on page six and seven. I know you've seen this policy quite a bit, but this is the requirement where the student transfers to a different school. The threat assessment team must verify that any intervention services provided to the student remain in place, et cetera.
I still have a problem with.
This is straight out of state law.
I know, but you know, you know my thoughts on that. But I just, I, I would, could we add some more language? And Mr. Bradshaw's still here. I just, once a kid transfers on a Central County school system, I don't know, other than we've sent transcripts, we've sent documentation, all the other information along with the child, what happens if the other school doesn't pick that up? And we, this says that we have to remain in place until.
I think what it says is verify. So, I mean, once you, they've acknowledged that they've received the student and that those services are in place, I mean, that's a good question for Mr. Bradshaw.
It says the threat assessment team must verify that any intervention services provided must remain in place. Once we let that kid go.
Leave it the way it is, that's the law.
Leave it the way it is, that's the law. Okay.
It feels like it's about just a handoff.
It is.
It's, it's just making sure that when it's handed off, we've, they've acknowledged it, we've, we've got record of it. I think you just need to make sure they've acknowledged it.
Okay. So we'll, if we can do that, then I just don't want to be responsible for some other school falling down on the intervention that we were doing.
But even within district, if we had, you know, a student moved from one of our schools in the county to another school, it certainly, I think, also, you know, talks about if something was done at Hernando Elementary, that if they went to Central Ridge, we're still doing those things and those things will still be in place.
Yeah, I can see that within, worried about the protection of our.
In reality, what we used to do when I was councilor was that you called up the other school and talked with the other school about it and to make sure that you felt comfortable. But that was in, you followed up.
And that's a good point, Ms. Powers, because we've talked about even when a student may have moved to a non-public school, and we've said, we hope that school understands, you know, some of the things. This would then, I think, assure that that conversation has taken place.
But then we've also entered kids into our school system without any records from preceding.
No, that's a good, that's a different, that's a great though.
I know, but I'm, I'm just worried about where this responsibility lies, you know, because they come and they register with us and we take them and then their transcript comes two weeks later.
Yeah.
The information. So we've been very generous in that. And we talked about this, I think, a couple years ago about the statute saying, you know, do we have to take them right away and what's that reasonable amount of time to enter them? But.
But the law is, right, that if a threat assessment has been done on a child from another school district and that child transfers to our school district, we must verify that we have the information from their threat assessment team and we must independently determine the need for intervention services. So our threat assessment team has to be notified. And I tell you what, I would sure hope that threat assessments team from one district to another would be working together and taking that seriously. I mean, it's just, the same thing goes with us. If we instituted a threat assessment on a child that transferred Marion County, they've got to verify that they have the child and the threat assessment that we've done and that the intervention services remain in place until their threat assessment team determines if that can change. Isn't that right, Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes.
But that's only within the public system.
That's correct.
And I mean, that's, I mean, and I agree with you and I, and there's recourse if they didn't within law. And I think, I really believe that private schools would as well, but this assures that any public or charter school would then have to.
Right.
It would, you know, it does bring up the, Mr. Dodd, and it may be something within your, you know, groups to consider if any of the Hope Scholarship Schools or other ones, if there's a way to, to make that and, you know, part of that obligation so that at least we could maybe broaden that to those schools because they are receiving taxpayer dollars to be able to do that.
I had a question over, on page five of nine, number four, when it talks about the threat assessment team may obtain criminal history, record information, that is accurate? The threat team can go and the service department and get that information?
Yes.
Will be denied? Okay.
All right. Item B is policy 4.32. This is being repealed due to the new parent and family engagement plan at each school, which covers this, these requirements. So there's really no new policy, we're just repealing this one.
And answer my question.
And I'm assuming that the, our other policy now will comply now with ESER and meeting the, our federal requirements now for under Title I. The, the policy that this is replacing meets all of those.
Yes, my understanding is the parent and family engagement plans at the schools.
Meets up, meets all of that. Thanks.
Item C is a revision to add a citation only regarding Title I, Part A, which is regarding measurable objectives to policy 6.115, teacher aides and paraprofessionals. Any questions on that? Moving on to 6.19, essential services. I just need to get some clarification on some of the provisions for extraordinary pay. I'd like to have a little more time to bring this back to you than the next workshop.
Can I make a comment while you're looking at it again?
Yes, ma'am.
Is, there's something happening and it happened when I was back in the classroom a couple years back. There's part of it that just says we've given some latitude to the administration to declare an emergency. We had a problem, and I think we still probably do, nobody at Crystal High School wanted first period planning because they were always called on to give up their planning to go check for a room for another teacher who either didn't get a sub or just didn't show up. Is that considered, would that be considered an emergency? I'm just trying to think about the pay and what teachers have been doing in the past, volunteering to give up their planning period, cover another teacher's class.
This particular policy, just to give you a little background on it, this is kind of common in other branches of government, like county government for essential services. It's not really specific to that situation. It's more if we have a hurricane or.
It's going to be a declared state of emergency.
Okay, so it has to be a declared state of emergency, it could just be a particular.
Right, something major.
Just checking because.
For essential services.
I'm excited to play even time and a half for color notes.
And isn't there, isn't there a way to identify those who are going to be essential? I mean.
They would be identified by the superintendent based on the state of emergency and the need. And it gives a lot of flexibility and latitude. It could be for hurricane, it could be for recovery from a major event, it could be anything.
So, and with that being said, we could feasibly say that any employee can be considered essential for a certain event?
Yes. Because we're all state employees.
And I think a lot of our instructional staff like to volunteer at the hurricane shelters.
There is a lot of discussion about this particular policy that Mr. Bradshaw, Mr. Dixon, and Kaler pull it, so we have this conversation and bring it back to the board before they have any questions.
So, Mr. Dixon, on page two of three, paragraph B, the last three sentences, what does that mean?
Page two of three, paragraph B?
Yes, the last three sentences.
That's actually the section I need to get some clarification on. So that's.
Okay, I didn't understand.
Yes, I'll, when I bring that back, I'll have that. And then finally, the last item is item E. This policy, 8.10, safety, which you've seen several times, is being revised to include additional requirements under section four regarding CESA reporting and required training. So we have made like four or several revisions to this particular policy, but this is the latest to add these two provisions.
And I had one thing, I think, on, from menu four, section A, I think the law does require that superintendent must annually certify, correct? Annually is in the law. It's got to be an annual certification.
So you made add the word annual?
Yeah, well, and just check it, I mean, I checked it.
Okay.
With the law, I looked at, it said that superintendent must annually certify the department's education, that the department's timely reporting. And, you know, the thing, the thing that we need to remember is that the first paragraph on section four does define other, other things that's in the law. So that is there, it's just that I think we need to require, we need to put that in the policy.
Okay, I'll go back and verify that it's annual requirement, and if it is, I'll add it. I think it is too. Any other comments? Okay. That concludes our policy workshops.
Okay, thank you. Education Service, Dr. Bieber.
Mr. Bittner and Mrs. Kahler have led the work on our student progression plan, and so I'm going to ask them to come up and present to you the student progression plan workshop and answer any questions you have regarding that plan.
Just about good afternoon. You have in board docs a copy of the latest draft of our student progression plan. In addition, you have the change log. So I thought the best way would be to hand out a hard copy of the change log and then we could pull up the progression plan and go through it. I think we've streamlined the process this year, so hopefully we can get through it quickly. I'm not sure why it's coming up, I have it saved on here. Mr. Doug, can you pull it from board docs?
I was just going to say, it's on board docs. Did you want, did you get the documents you need or do you get on the board docs?
Yeah, yeah, I had saved it on here, I was trying to. All right, I have it saved to the desktop and I have it on flash drive.
Is it? Keep going up. Next one? Is it that one?
Yes.
Yeah, the X.
It's right there. That's the committee change log. Here, here it is, right here, I have it all saved, it's just not coming up.
Okay. Let me try to find it.
Okay, let me try to find it.
It's just like a classroom, you know, like you go to Plan B.
Yes, you're so well prepared. Okay.
There it is.
All right.
If you hit the arrow onto the right of the logo.
Yep, thank you. Okay, here we go. So, let me explain what you have in front of you in, in hard copy and as well, it is in Board Docs. So these are our committee notes and the change log. We also, in addition, after the change log, we have our agenda items from the elementary student progression meeting, the middle school portion, and the high school portion. So you will see who was at each of these meetings. At each level, we have teachers, parents, school board members, administrators, and district leadership representing each one of these meetings. And then after each committee meeting, at the end, we would have a joint meeting and then we would go through all the changes and make final recommendations to the school board, which is where we're at today for our workshop. So we tried to really streamline the process this year, and Mr. Bitner has been amazing in this process. So what we've done is not only do we have the changes, we have the page number, we have the line items for you, and we've reformatted the document. Mrs. Crowell was instrumental in that process as well, so I do want to recognize her. So with that being said, I want to go ahead and go through the changes, and as we go through the changes, I'll pull up the actual change on the document. For today's purposes, we left the line items for you so you could easily find the changes, and then once we move towards final approval, we'll take out those line items.
Ms. Kaler, for just clarification purposes, and Mr. Bradshaw, I guess I'm asking this, am I correct in saying because this goes through rulemaking, which means it's a policy adoption, this would be considered an academic policy? Is that correct? And I say that for not your benefit, I know you know that, Ms. Kaler, but for the public. This is, you know, this is truly a, a policy that, that determines the academic progress of our students, but it is one that we work on, and I, I'm just so appreciative because it is annually reviewed, adjusted, and then as soon as we get done with it, usually the legislation passes and we have to modify it in the middle of it, so, thank you, but I just, I think it's important to understand this is an academic policy.
Yes, and this process starts in March, April of the previous year, and we are just now moving it to Board Workshop, and then once we go through public input and approval, we will start the process again. So the first item, this is very important, and I feel like this really needed to be stated this year because of COVID-19 and everything that happened with legislation. I want to go ahead and read this aloud. "All policies and procedures in the student progression plan are subject to change due to the actions of the Florida Legislature, the Florida Board of Education, the state and federal courts, and/or the school board of Citrus County. Policies and procedures pertaining to statewide assessments, including graduation, promotion requirements, designations, dual enrollment, and grading, may be revised for some students per FDOE guidelines who were impacted by the cancellation of state testing in the spring of 2019-20. We felt that that was very important to place in here, just in case anything else changes, we are, we are covered." And so the next addition, and hopefully you can find it quickly, it's on the same page, line item 14, and this really was just terminology that was added for enrollment. We really tried this year to only include changes that had content changes, not so much other grammatical errors, because believe it or not, we go through this document inside and out, and we still can debate all day about some of the grammatical pieces, so we really tried to stick to content today. So the next piece is in 1A6, page eight, so I am going to scroll down to page eight. Okay, it starts, line item 37, and this was a change by Student Services pertaining to our students who come to us from home school education. We just really wanted to be more consistent in how we were assessing those students. So you'll see that verbiage there, and we were just more precise in what we were asking from our students who are homeschooled. Is that correct, Ms. Bob? Okay.
And just for verification, that, and I know you do cite statute here, but what we're suggesting just by clarifying this a little tighter, it does meet statute and it does meet law. And I, and I just asked that, I'm sure you guys did, but I just want to make sure that we do.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, and that, that is in there. Any questions on that piece? All right. The next item is on page 11. And this pertains to our Citrus Virtual Options. We had discussion this summer when we first initially started working on our plan. We had talked about what we will call in our Citrus Virtual Programs, and initially we put in Citrus Virtual School. We know that it's not its own entity, so it is a Citrus Virtual Program option, so that's what that line item is. The next item is on page 12, starting with line item 37, and we added this to our Excel bullets. So, Mrs. Stanley, if you, we have any questions regarding adding rigorous industry certifications that are articulated to college credit and approved pursuant to Florida statute, we added work-related internships or apprenticeships, and cooperative diversified education. The next item is in that same section. We added by a school, by a school designee. Once again, it's, it's really just pertaining to specifically who is responsible for those pieces. And then we added if a principal initiates a student participation in an Excel option, the student's parent must be notified. Performance contract is not required, but when a principal initiates that participation, that could be at the discretion of the principal, and that's on page 14.
I know it's in here, I think, but maybe if you know where it is, do we have something that talks about accelerated options if they're being pursued prior to the, you know, the end of it, that they need to be on track to graduate? Is there something, I mean, there's sometimes where people, you know, I know that in counseling, guidance counseling, they'll be, you know, in their junior, I mean, their sophomore year or junior year and be like, oh, I want to go to WTC, but they have not met the requirements to be on track to graduate specifically, have not passed the FSAs or the algebra, the tenth grade algebra. Is there something that we're able to have Staff Point Two or somebody to say, this is why we don't do that? I know that's our practice, and I think it's a good practice, by the way, I just didn't know if that was covered within here.
To my knowledge, you don't have wording to that effect in this document.
Okay, and it's made, it's not to hold this up, but that may be something we put a note for coming that, you know, that we have that, because I know recently I had a conversation with a, a parent, trying to help them understand that our goal is to have them get a high school diploma, and we completely want to have those flexibilities and options, but we have to have them on track to graduate before we start looking at acceleration components or, or other expanded opportunities, because the first and foremost importance is for them to get that high school diploma. So just something to think about, because it was in this general area. Thank you.
I have a list of things that you've started to look for for next year, so I'll add it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. And then on page 17, line item 24, this was added, and we changed it from have met the basic skills testing requirement for their program, we changed the word to must to should.
Does that Mr. Bradshaw change that?
No.
Mrs. Stanley, do you know the-
Why we changed the wording from must to should on this piece?
And this was for WTC?
Mm-hmm. Students should have met the basic skills testing requirement for their program, and it, in the past, it said must.
I think it gives, when you say must, there's no flexibility, should, I think, gives some discretion to the, to WTC as well as to the individual schools, and I think that we're always trying to meet the needs of the students, and sometimes they're extenuating the circumstances, and when you say should, it gives us the opportunity to do that. So if they go to what? Yes, ma'am.
So the requirement for the two grade levels recommended score on the Tabe test, is that a must or is that still a should also? It goes along with that.
It says students should.
If you could scroll back up to that, we can-
Right. So. On line 24, page 4.
So, I mean, there's a couple of statements in there prior to they must have, students must successfully have completed at least four semesters, they must have good attendance and discipline history.
I'm sorry, I'm looking, you said students seeking, this is for WTC, so when you, when you're talking about, yeah, students should have met the basic testing requirements for the programs, score within two grade levels recommended on the test tape, or students seeking a dual enrollment, should meet the additional requirements, where's the, which line is must, Mr. Dodd?
Isn't the, I'm sorry, maybe I was, I thought the word change was in the, like, the third sentence down, is that, is that really the same spot?
Yes.
So, students should have met the basic skills testing requirement for the program or have scored.
Right.
So neither one of those are, are a must then?
No, sir, and actually, this is, would be for a WTC. I'm not as intimately familiar with, with the Tabe requirements, it's been a while since I have been in the post-secondary world from being an assistant director over there, but I'm, that's, that's my understanding, Mr. Dodd, yes.
So they'll have flexibility with the dual enrollment there, but the good attendance and discipline here, history is a must still, I love that statement.
I would say so because they would, would like for them to be successful, and I, I think they try to be as reasonable and as flexible as possible, but I think that there are some basic requirements that they have found that are beneficial to ensuring the success of the students that come.
Okay.
Because they're, they're, when they go to clock hours and things like that, you have to be there a certain amount of time, and if there is a problem with people being absent, students being absent, it, it affects their ability to be successful.
Is, Ms. Stanley, in this, as I'm looking there, is there any, like, for example, and I like that we are providing more flexibility for WTC to be able to accept that, if, if a student met these requirements in their minimum, but there were still concerns about them, let's say, entering, is there anything that would allow us to have a non-recommendation or, you know, how, if, if I met these minimum requirements, am I then not entitled to go there?
If you meet the minimum requirements, I think what happens is that they, they really truly try to look at students on an individual basis, they meet with the guidance counselors, the students have to actually apply to, to say, I would like to go there, and so I think it's a conversation that's had, and I think that they do their very best to, to make as many students as possible eligible. If I-
And I think that, I think that is the course, I was just was concerned with, you know, whether we find ourselves locked in to a non-successful situation, and that's, that was what, but it sounds like we have some, some latitude there.
Yes, sir, and I think they try to address it with the guidance counselor, with the parents, and have a conversation and bring them over there and say, this is what, you know, is available to you, you know, and I think when you talk about being successful at WTC, a lot of those students are so self-motivated that they can rise above some obstacles that maybe they have to overcome.
Is this a section that you would like to have more conversation with? We could always ask Mrs. Bishop to come, or we could?
No, the only thing I was going to say on the dual enrollment piece above it that wasn't it, and again, this is to me future conversations, not for this, this story, is, and I've talked to Mr. Bitner about this, there's, there is a surprising misperception among some of our students and their families as to how the weighting system correlates with their success rate in dual enrollment. For example, they think if they get a B, they've really gotten an A because of the weighting system, and it doesn't really measure out that way, especially when they now transfer that credit to college. And so I think there may be worth some documentation in there, just so that that's, that's referenced, because I was, I've been surprised lately to hear it from multiple sources, oh, I'm okay getting a B because it's an A, I'm okay getting a C because it's really a B, and that's, doesn't really work out, and it could be very damaging to them academically later. So, thank you.
Yes. All right, the next piece is on page 18. Let me go down. Line item 29, starting, and this is where we added in statewide assessment programs, we added the Geometry EOC as a comparative score in the paragraph in chart. We added students who were enrolled in Algebra I during the 2019-20 school year will be able to pass the Geometry EOC as an additional opportunity to meet the math assessment graduation requirement for FSA Algebra I.
Algebra I and Algebra II are much different.
Yes, they are. They wanted to give an opportunity for those students because of our remote learning and COVID-19 last year, those students who were not able to take that FSA, they would have another opportunity, so they could have, they could take the geometry to count, because geometry is what they're taking now, so it's just another opportunity for them.
Well, I notice with the next page, we talked about high school secondary about computer science substitute for Algebra I and Geometry could not happen with that agreement because it turns a different way. So this, line 18 doesn't change at all, does it say that for math or calculus or substitute, doesn't, doesn't change it and not make it a substitute for Algebra I and Geometry or here's this computer science. Don't have any equality, and that on this page, you're not making it like an equal to, because they're not. I'm not, I'm just like, some of the, the other groups, other boards wanted Algebra I and Geometry, you could substitute new factors for those two, because they considered those, them to be equal, and not equal, I felt, and your statement on page 18 says they're not equal, but I, I was wondering if the statement on the next page gave any indication that they might be.
There is concordance ones that, that, that the state has determined to be of equal rigor, but it's very limited, and Ms. Stanley and I have, in fact, have argued over the years trying to broaden some of that because the mispowers of what your concern is, that, that they may not be of equal, I don't know if that's what Mr. Bitner, I was trying to help so that she understood where you were, what you might answer.
I think, I, I see it as kind of two small different issues here. The one that we have on 1D1, page 18, lines 29, 38, and 30 to 32, that was guidance from the state, that because students did not, were not able to take the FSA, if they wanted to take the Geometry this year and use that as a substitute for the Algebra I that they missed, they wouldn't have to be tested extra. So it's really only, this particular one with Ms. Crowell is only a one-time shot, really. It's this year, we missed the testing, and we didn't want to have them go and make a whole bunch of testing. This is not so much equivalent- This is not so much the equivalency that algebra is equivalent to geometry. It is simply a fact of COVID that we added this.
And it's only for the ninth graders that it's entered in 2018, 2019. So it's, it was just a one-shot date.
Oh, for that, yeah, right.
Yes, ma'am. Oh, no, no, no. Just this year because they didn't want to have them, that they were in Algebra I, they left Algebra I, they didn't want to have them go back and test. So they say, you do the geometry this year, you pass the geometry, we'll count it for the Algebra I because you missed that test last year.
And then adding the second question that you dealt with, I thought, well, you know, are they gonna now say it's, uh, uh, computer science?
No. We don't want to go there.
I know, I've argued that point forever. And if it is stated or not, they lied, you can't do that. So, okay, thanks, guys.
The only problem with, um, 30 and 232, and I understand if that was what the state suggested, but none of our current graduates this year obviously take advantage of that because that was only for those that graduated in the, the spring. So I'm not sure why it's in there. And I know it's not you all, it's, I think it was by, by, you know, the state was saying that, but it doesn't make sense.
We're talking about the fact that because you don't necessarily have to be in that year to have been doing the Algebra I.
Well, you can't use it anymore. I, it, it was what was used to graduate in 2020. But it, it does, it says during the 2019, 2020 school year, as you know, this, as how it says. But it was my understanding that that only worked for that graduating class. So, for example, 2021, if you hadn't passed it, you now still have to pass the Algebra I. You can't take the EOC, the, the Geometry EOC to meet the graduation requirements.
Let me follow up on Ms. Crowell on that. Because the way I understood it was that if you took Algebra I at that point in the 2019, 2020 school year, at any point in time, you could, because you might be a sophomore at that.
Check that.
You might be a junior, but I'll check that.
Because I think we're retesting those kids.
I'll, I'll look.
Yeah, I think we're actually been retesting those kids. So it, and my, so my follow-up to that would be, if that's the case, we may want to put a clarifying sentence afterwards that says, graduated class, you know, something still will, you know, still must meet the, the other standards. Because I do think there is some misunderstanding with that. And I, I know that in some of my training, that was discussed. That, that there was misunderstanding that you still had to take it. But Ms. Crowell, whatever she says, I'm sure is fact.
We'll definitely follow up on that. So the next one's on page 23.
These are so well written, and, and many times Thomas says, I say, he had questions in public about certain things. Y'all have written this so clearly and so well, we could take this.
Well, we appreciate that. A lot of time goes into that behind the scenes. And, and like I said, it's 18. So, okay. Okay, so this was added. So students of the 2022 graduation cohort are exempt from needing to meet the ELA Graduation Assessment Requirement for Dual Enrollment Eligibility. However, they must still have achieving qualifying scores noted in the chart above to be eligible for dual enrollment. So if you have any questions, Mr. Bittner could answer on this piece.
And this correlates with our articulation agreement, our, the numbers occurring, the score. The scores are going to our concurrent, to our articulation agreement. Thank you.
This was from an emergency order because kids didn't have a chance to do the FSA test as sophomores, and they wanted to apply for dual enrollment, which is why you still have to have a concordant score, but you didn't have to have the FSA score.
I have some clarification from Mrs. Crowell. She's watching from a distance. So she's indicated Geometry EOC is now a concordant score for all students, not just those students who took algebra that year. It's for all now. Geometry retakes are in the fall and the winter. And if any student doesn't pass the algebra, they can pass the algebra retakes, the ACT math, the SAT math, the PSAT math, or Geometry EOC to meet the graduation requirement.
I think, though, that sentence, that still goes back to them. That sentence is not, I'm trying to pull it back up.
So that might need to be reworked.
Yeah, if you just look at it, just so that that's, yeah. Thank you all.
Any other questions?
I have this question about ACT and, um, the test that the kids take.
Yes.
If, um, something to be clear about, um, what type of test it is, who functions best, or maybe you can't do that, maybe can't say that. But I know, um, when you saw a child ready to take ACT, you knew that child had a certain personality that would best, best, uh, take an ACT or PSAT, another personality. Though very different in the type of student it is that they do well on. To me, I think one is the academic, I guess, is, is, uh, easiest one. But others, it is not, you know, because I tend to be more academic inclined, and the others tend to be more real-world inclined or something. But I meant, if maybe something could be, for the year, or I'm just giving out with this to the kids, to give them information without trying to sell one test over the other, just so they had information. I mean, you had some programs, I need to get that to students. So it would be really good for all students to be able to make choices like that.
Right, just having an explanation of the two different types of tests helps the students make the best choice for themselves.
Exactly.
Did you...
I don't know whether that would go into the progression plan, though. I, I know counselors handle it, I know I handled it as a teacher. I had...
But it's not handled by everybody else, so you gotta, and it just has to go on. Did your ready, uh, do, end up, ended up with?
Yeah, but I think that's how we, we do it. I, I know I had one parent ask me, she, I don't know why she can't score a good SAT score when she's got such a great ACT score. And I said, well, I bet if I came to your dinner, she's got her meat over here, her peas over here, and her potatoes over here, and they're not touching. She says, yeah. And I said, because she's an ACT person, not an SAT person. And so I think a lot of, gee, I don't know, people, we did the ACT, um, was during our high school. So we, we had those conversations. I started at sophomore level. And I was talking about their PSAT next year at the tutor's. So I think it, I think it's happening more in classroom and, and really.
Would you like, uh, perhaps I draft up something that we can just share with other husbands?
I would, because I know some people, you, you do it. Some people are maybe in, they're the football coach, I mean, what, and they're taught to have an ACT tape, or I think...
Obviously, not speaking of the football coach, at least.
They might know it all, but still, they're not gonna be teaching.
Yeah, but I, but I think you're right. If, if, just for the school's purposes, if you could draft the difference between the test and the difference between the personalities for the kids.
Absolutely.
It, it sometimes just settles them down. The minute I told this, this mom, uh, her kid just wasn't an SAT kid, um, she, she got off her back.
And that's totally, you know, what you're saying, yeah. You can recognize what the child should take, you know, because of their personality. Yeah.
I'll put something in there.
Thanks a lot. We go off-topic subject, too.
Okay, moving right along. We're gonna go to page 31 now. And this was just wording that came from our ESC department. And it's in regards to the requirements for standard diploma via access scores for students with significant cognitive disabilities and their requirements. And we had quite a bit of discussion just about leaving the piece with, uh, regards, regarding entering ninth grade in 2014, 15, and beyond. And Mrs. Kirby felt like she wanted to keep that wording in there. That's how it's stated in, in statute. So if you're questioning why we kept that in there, that's why. And that covers our general section. So now we'll move into elementary, middle, and high school. And really, we had nothing to change in elementary, but some verbiage.
Overachievers.
Well, all the legislation really was focused on secondary. The one change we did make was in regards to our good cause opportunities for third-grade students. So on page 39, you'll notice that it, it did originally state that other standardized assessments, when available, could be considered for our third-grade students. If they score Level 1 on FSA, what other opportunities do we have to assess them? And originally, it stated SAP 10. We want to give them as many opportunities as possible. And we can also get those students the I-TBS. And now we have I-Ready. So I-Ready could be used as a good cause assessment for our third-grade students if needed.
Oh, that's great.
Yes, it just gives one more opportunity. So that's why we just wanted it stated, other standardized assessments. Just to keep it more open-ended and giving us more opportunities. Yes, and that's it for elementary.
Adjournment. You said, what would it make it easier for him? I said, just adjourn the meeting.
Are there any questions on elementary, or are we ready to move on?
Okay.
Okay. Our next is gonna be on page 56. 56, line 9, we're adding the word available via Skyword. And then also on this one, um, on lines 33 and 34, available via Skyword and a printed copy available upon request. Just to make sure it was clear for parents and staff. Any questions? I'll move on to page 57, lines 29 to 30. And at the bottom there, you can see, we had a clarification, um, to make sure that it was very clear to everyone how a student's final grade in middle school will be comprised.
We didn't change the, the formula, we just clarified.
It was just a clarification, we didn't change any formula. We felt that that was a good place to put it so that if you're reading the progression plan, you could see, okay, this is how my grades calculate. Any questions? Let us move on to page 69. So on page 69, line 43, we added, I'll pull that up a little more. Career and technical education pathway as a way from, right, as a way for graduating from high school. Any questions? We then go to page 71.
70.
Oh, I missed one? I apologize. Page 70.
We've already done that.
We did, let me... No, no, I'll, I'll make sure I cover it again. Lines 25 to 29. Uh, and this is from state statute, um, and that's what it says, and which is why we added it in there. A student who earns a computer science credit may substitute the credit for up to one credit of the math requirement, with the exception of Algebra I and geometry, if the computer science credit is identified as being equivalent in rigor to the mathematics credit. And on the course guide that you get from the state, it identifies which are equivalent.
It's a small list.
Yes.
It's a pretty rigorous list, too.
It is. Any questions about page 70? Page 71 is an interesting change. I'll give a little context on this one as I, I explain it. So according to the state on page 71, line 5, we, it used to read for us, point five credit in economics with financial literacy. Now, that is no longer the case as a requirement. All that's required from the state is economics. But we are still having all students do economics with financial literacy. And the reason for this is because if we just give them economics, and two students want financial literacy, we then have to find that course and give it to them. And so everyone here is still doing economics with financial literacy. However, because it's the student progression plan, we want to make sure that a student who transferred in with economics didn't have to go back and then we take that class and, uh, graduate. So that was really the verbiage to match the state. But the philosophy with us at Ed Services, the financial literacy is the smartest move for our school district, for our schools. Any questions on that one? For page 72, the next two kind of go together. Because it's, uh, it seemed to us on the committee that this was contradictory information. Line... If you go to line 27 to 32. So we used to have a phrase in there that said, however, the entire course must be completed online. But then what we added on 27 to 32, it says that a student could satisfy the online requirement with a blended living class, and therefore it wouldn't be entirely online. So just to match up those, we took out the entirely online, or entire course must be completed online. So it didn't contradict that. Any questions?
There is conversation about whether that needs to be removed out of statute now that we've had COVID.
Right.
Because it's, it's really, you know, I mean, the, the purpose of it, which had a purpose, is really not a purpose any longer. And I hope it does get, you know, removed. Well, the online requirement of, of a graduation, I mean, it's kind of like everyone now, you know, for the last and next number of years, have all had an online.
And then on the next part, and I just realized we have to indent that bullet over a little more, and we'll get, take, take care of that. It is the expect, we added this. It is the expectation, although not required, that a student completes and files a free application for federal student aid FASPA form with the United States Department of Education. There was a bill last year that was originally going to have this as a requirement. That part did not get passed into law. However, in our discussion with the committee, we felt that even though it's not a law, it's important that we start putting that in there because we need to increase FASPA completion rates. Because many of our students who are on free and reduced lunch could get a Pell Grant, which would give them more than enough money to go to a community college and get tuition paid for for an entire year.
There's also a benefit to the school or district, is they're not for the, for, to increase the number of FASPA applicants.
They, the state and the federal government monitor how well each district is doing with completion rates. So there's a benefit because last year, as our district was one of the lower rates of FASPA completion that we had, so we definitely moved for them.
And Mr. Bittner, I can't thank you enough for trying to increase ours here, and it has increased. Um, our schools have done a, a great job increasing that number, and it is a direct financial and academic benefit to the students.
Absolutely.
And I think a lot of parents have gotten over the idea that they have to just divulge a lot of those financial records for these children to apply to this. And a lot, we, we still have trouble getting people to say they need free reduced lunch because they don't want to sign the paper. And that's kept a lot of our kids from doing it.
But it's important.
It's important.
I agree. Any comments on page 72? I move to page 73. There used to be a table on page 73 that was not taken out. Rather, it was moved to Appendix C. Um, and I will, when we get to Appendix C, I'll point that out. And I will, when we get to Appendix C, I'll point that out. But it was just simply moved so it would flow better and have a better placement within the entire document. Page 73, lines 42 to 43. I'm going to start at 42. "A student who graduates early may continue to participate in school activities, but they cannot participate in athletics." And there were some that were going to argue that activities meant athletics. And we just clarified that athletics is not athletics. Any questions? I move to page 74. Line 11. We added the Excel standard diploma option. Put it there to add clarity to the document and what was required. Any questions? Page 74. Line 26. Page 74, line 26, we replace with... Oh, we just replaced the wording of the "take test." So that we had some more flexibility there. Any questions? Page 76. As we were reviewing the document this year, when we came to... So cum laude award system. When we came to this part, we realized that for some reason, the word weighted had been lost. And we just added it back in because in previous progression plans, the word weighted had always been in there. And that's how we do the cum laude system. A summa cum laude has a weighted GPA of 4.0 or higher. And so it was just added in there to make sure that it was clarified. Any questions? I move to page 76, line 24. It used to say, "The gold or silver seal of By Literacy." And we simply changed the or to the and because both of them recognize students who obtained a high level of competence. The other thing we did there was near the bottom, actually, line 32 to 41. Oh, 32 and 41, I'm sorry. Is, in order to... There's a lot of the rules that govern how you earn gold or silver seal of By Literacy. But instead of listing all those rules, we put in the link so that parents could find it themselves. Any questions? I move to page 86. There was a new chart from the state that we needed to add. And that is what we did there. So this chart... This is something that counselors use exhaustively because they need to keep track of everything. So we picked this new chart, added it in there as a nice reference form for all the counselors to have at their disposal. Any questions? Page 88. There are waiver options when you do HOPE and personal fitness, et cetera. And that was always... There's always questions about what works, what doesn't work, how does it interact? So this chart there clarifies for counselors when kids and parents have participated in a sport, does this count for this part? Where does HOPE fall in, et cetera? Any questions with page 88? I go to page 89. We've already discussed the financial literacy. We just needed to add it in here to make sure it was clarified in Appendix D that to graduate, you only need economics, not economics with financial literacy. But that was just a clarification from before. Any questions? And then finally, on page 91, we added Appendix F. So that it was... I went too far, I'm sorry. Let me just read the title for Appendix F. "Multi-tiered system of supports for a secondary level." That would be both middle school and high school so that staff at those levels of schools would be able to see what the tiered system of support was. So those are the changes that we are recommending. I know that I have written down the things to follow up with and things to look forward going forward in the future. But are there any other questions about the student progression plan? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good week.
Mrs. Counter, are we going to move on?
Uh, we're going to move on.
With the agenda?
You're going to do that?
Yes. Okay, so I'm going to give you an overview of Title IV just so you can understand the components involved in the Title IV funding. And then I want to go over some examples of how other districts utilize their Title IV funding. And then I will go into how we utilize our Title IV funding. So Title IV is also known as the Student Support and Academic Enrichment Grant. And there are three components. The first is well-rounded education. The second component is safe and healthy students in schools. The third component is technology. So those are the three broad areas that we can spend this funding on. So the next page and/or slide just kind of gives you an overview of allowable activities. This is not an exhaustive list. It's just examples of how you can spend your Title IV funding. So the first section, well-rounded education, that really is... The purpose is to provide an enriched curriculum opportunity and access for all of our students. The focus is on strengthening core instruction with a focus on integrating different content areas. For example, STEM. STEM, a lot of districts focus on that. Science, technology, engineering, math integration. Or STEAM, adding that art piece. Fine arts, history. Integrating history into our ELA instruction. Those are all focus areas of well-rounded education. Safe and healthy schools. Another hot topic, especially with our mental health focus and initiatives. Social, emotional well-being. Building relationships. Trying to focus on positive discipline practices. That's our safe and healthy school piece. Effective use of technology, that's our last component. And the state really wants us to focus on professional development for our teachers and administrators in this area. But it does rely heavily on the focus of digital learning for our students. Enhancing that. So the first one, well-rounded education, back to that one. I did some research to find out what other counties were spending their Title IV funding on. And the most prevalent activities were STEM or STEAM, which I just discussed. We have 38 districts in the state of Florida that are utilizing some of their Title IV funding on STEM or STEAM activities. Professional development is another area where 38 other districts utilize our funding. And we work very closely in our department with Title II, Mrs. Voithaler, and also Mrs. Johnson in regards to Title I funding. We really do try to pool our funds and maximize those funding sources to focus on professional development. Supplementing core instruction for science and math. 18 other districts focus on that. College and career readiness activities. 14 districts have an activity focused on that. Supplementing that core instructional piece, literacy, and then music. So you can see the number of districts that focus on these activities in the component of well-rounded education. In safe and healthy schools, social, emotional learning, 33 districts focus on that within their safe and healthy guidelines. Professional development, 32 districts utilize that funding for staff development. Additional personnel, graduation coaches, behavior specialists, additional resources for that social, emotional piece at the school level. 17 districts utilize this funding to support physical education. And then parental and community involvement activities. 15 districts utilize their funding for activities that support that. Then we have improving the use of technology. 34 districts purchase additional equipment. 33 districts focus on professional development, which once again, the state really wants us utilizing our funding for that. There's a 15% cap on technology, and I'll explain that in a moment. 27 districts utilize that funding for online resources. 24 on software. And 13, again, on STEM and STEAM equipment. So the guidelines for this funding are as follows. If we receive over $30,000, which we do, we receive this year $395,163. It has increased... This is our fourth year with Title IV funding. It has increased every year. Last year, we received about $340,000. So you can see it's increased about almost $50,000, $60,000. We have to do a comprehensive needs assessment. We begin this process in March and April of the school year. And we start seeking input from other stakeholders. We start to review our discipline, attendance data. We look at our FSA data. We look at our in-house Citrus formative assessment, I Ready. Any data that we can pull together, we start to look at to decide, okay, how can we maximize the use of Title IV funding? And also looking at how are we using Title I? How are we using Title II or general funds as well? Then we have to work in all three of those component areas that I shared, the well-rounded education, safe and healthy schools, and technology. We have to spend at least 20% in well-rounded education activities, 20% in safe and healthy schools. And then the rest can be used anywhere. However, if we... Let's say we utilize 60% that was left in technology. We could not spend more of that 60% amount. 15% of that is capped at hardware. So we could only spend 15% of that 60% on iPads, let's say. They want us to limit the amount that's spent on hardware, software, and really focus on professional development. That's the goal.
Because it looked like it wasn't just hardware. It was even programs and subscriptions.
Yes, yes.
They want it on P E.
Yes.
Which partly is good.
And that has evolved. The first year, it just said 15% cap. But then it was like 15% of that total allocation. So they really want us focused on professional learning. In addition to that, we also have equitable services for our private schools. So every spring, we have a meeting offering federal assistance to all of our private schools. And we only have four schools that have an interest in Title IV. And that's Solid Rock Christian Academy, St. John Paul Catholic School, Emverness Christian Academy, and St. Paul Lutheran Academy. So they get some of our funding. And we base our formula on Title I. So the Title I formula that we follow is how we determine how much money they will get from Title IV. And they receive 3.74% of our overall allocation. And then you can see the amounts allocated for each school.
Are we able to just give them a check? Or do we have to monitor?
We monitor. We do all the spending. Oh, yes. And they have to submit a proposal to us based on those three components. And they... I have to approve it. And then, of course, I put it in a grant. And then any funding that is spent, we approve that. We do all of that purchasing.
Less than for doing that for under $4,000. That's a lot of work for everybody.
It is. And believe me, it takes... I have to keep reminding them, it's time to get your budget in. It's time to get your grant proposal in, so... So that's a piece of the funding.
What do they kind of generally use it for? Is there any standard that they use? Or do they use it for all kinds of...
Programs.
Programs.
Mostly books, eBooks this past year. Software on... They wanted to get I Ready, but they obviously didn't have enough money. So they had some other programs similar to that. Social, emotional programs.
Interesting.
It is interesting. P E equipment. And this is just a snapshot of what the grant actually looks like, the budget narrative. So you have to complete it in the different components, the three different areas. And then there's a section on some activities are considered blended, which means that they could fall in either category. And honestly, most of our activities are blended because they could fall under well-rounded education or safe and healthy schools. And obviously, technology, especially now. So this is how we have spent our money for this school year. Once again, I just want to remind you of the comprehensive needs assessment that is completed. And we get input from our principals, Ed Services team, and other stakeholders. So for well-rounded education, we have budgeted...
Can you mention that?
Yes.
So you have a documented needs assessment, like a... But that's not in... You're not providing that to us?
No, I could provide it to you.
Okay.
I absolutely have it.
And that's done just by sending an email out to the principals and say, hey, what are your needs? That kind of...
It's based on data. I collect or... When I say "I," our team collects all of the attendance data, discipline data, FSA data, Citrus formative assessment data. You know that the Citrus data PowerPoint that Mrs. Crowe shares yearly? We utilize that as our main component of the needs assessment. And then we determine what are the school's needs from there. So as I go through this, I can share with you an example from the needs assessment. And I can certainly share that with you, too.
But it's not... Let me just get this right. It's not just data that predicts the needs, is it?
We have data. We have surveys from our teachers, our parents, our students, staff.
I'm just saying, how does data determine if we have more needs in this area of music and arts? How would that...
Well, a survey. For example, we send out a survey to our teachers every year. What are some professional development opportunities that you would like to see for the following school year? So that's just an example. And I work closely with Mrs. Voithaler, who oversees Title II, which is professional development, and determining the needs for our district and the needs for professional development.
Needs are outside of professional development, though. I mean, for... It's not just... I mean, we have well-rounded education. We have a lot of different areas, right? Technology, all those different areas. So what are the needs outside of professional development?
So are you asking about technology, social, emotional learning?
I want to ask about what was brought to us about the music issue. I mean, there was... It sounds to me like there was...
Well, specifically, there was not one request that was unfunded for that music. So what that individual was asking you for is a block of money that he just got to do what he wants to do with. There... I talked to the principal. There was no request that was not funded in that program. So I don't know the answer to that question. We don't just give out blocks of money for people to just go off and do things with. It's zero-based budgeting. We're held accountable for the dollars that we get. So if there's a need, people generate that need. They generate that request. The school gets discretionary money. The principal would fill that. If the principal can't, then the principal would come to the district and say, "I have..." If the principal can't, then the principal would come to the district and say, I have a need for something that I can't fulfill. And to this point, that has not happened in that program.
So even in this Title IV, even in this assessment that's done district-wide, those teachers?
Well, we don't send out a cardboard, email to teachers and say, everybody wants something, go ahead and turn in a petition.
Right.
It's principals that if there's a need that they have that fits in the categories that this is allowed to be funded in, then we'll listen to what those needs are. That there were no needs that went unfunded or no requests that went unfunded. And we don't typically just take money like this and say, okay, we're going to divide it up. If y'all get thirty thousand dollars, just go do whatever you want with it. Taxpayers would not, I don't think would appreciate us doing that with our dollars. I mean, we're accountable. Trish told you, four thousand dollars she gives to a private school, she has to have a budget before she gives it out. That budget has to get approved, then we have to be accountable for every dollar that's spent that way. It would be the same way within our own programs too. We'd have to have the same level of accountability. But it starts with generating a need. Not, we don't start with giving you money and then you go look for something to spend it on. It starts with you generating the need for what you might be spending.
And that would not be approved through the Title IV grant. We have to be very specific. An example would be the Florida Music Educators Association Conference. We help fund that along with Title II every year. So I believe we send three representatives from each level, elementary, middle, high. And we have to be specific on the number of people, the number of registrations, the number of hotel rooms, the travel, the meals, I mean, very specific for each conference. So the Title IV is not something we'd say each department or each school would get five thousand dollars. We're not allowed to do that.
And just so, on the conference of needs assessment, that is done for all of our title grants that we have funded, all our title funding. Mrs. Voight Taylor facilitates a Title II, Mrs. Johnson facilitates Title I. Mrs. Taylor does Title III and Title IV. Title III is our ESOL and Title IV. So we use that comprehensive needs assessment, which includes surveys and the data that's collected. And surveys are given out, as you know, we do district surveys every year to our teachers and to our parents and to our students. And so that survey data is reviewed by ed services. So when they're writing those grants and those funding sources that we get, they use that to make those decisions. So it isn't just a, the piece she was talking about wasn't just Title IV needs assessment. It's everybody uses the needs assessment.
Right. And so we really haven't seen a need, we haven't, there hasn't been anything in the needs assessment that would say that we need to do more for music and art.
Right, because the schools would request that. I mean, you know, as a former principal, the teachers would come to me, I would do my best to navigate providing the funding at the school. If I was in a situation where I felt like we need to go beyond the school, that's when I'd call my district departments and say, can you all support this? And then as a district, they determine, is this a district need?
And it would not be limited just to Title IV money. We may decide we're going to take it out of somewhere else. Some of that could come out of Title IV, but it may be better served to come out of a different project. If it were equipment, it may be a capital expense if they connected that way. So it wouldn't necessarily automatically be assigned to Title IV just because you can use Title IV for.
And in the surveys, which I know is part of the data, and that's why we try to talk to both parents and staff and why those surveys are so valuable, because they establish some of what's happening here as we're learning again. If there was something that came up where there was an area of either study, whether it's in STEAM or STEM, whether it was in science, whether it was in, you know, language arts reading, that would begin to bubble up to say, we have staff that's saying, we need some professional development. We need resources, we need whatever that may be. And there may be then parents that say, we're lacking of those things. That would then start some of that conversation and data that might then bubble down later to say, well, there's a line item here that reflects professional development or other needs, you know, material needs, which is, I think, Mr. Mullen's saying, it wouldn't necessarily just come out of Title IV. There may be a portion that comes out of Title IV, another portion that comes out of Title III, you know, in other areas, as well as the general fund. And principals would then be developing their budgets and their discretionary school budgets based on some of those feedback as well. Well, I think, you know, I don't want the perception to be that this board and superintendent doesn't care about music and art. I mean, I think we're very much proponents of that, right? And very much so, and, you know, I mean, it concerns me a little bit about the bands. I mean, the band programs are starting to wane a little bit, you know, and I don't know if we could, I don't know where the connection is there, if that's just an interest that's being lost amongst our students. I'm not really sure, but, you know, I think we're doing everything we can, I like to think that, but, you know. I think the one thing, and we know this, our extracurricular activities, whether they're athletics, music, I think ROTC seems to be pretty strong right now, but all of that, those buckets, challenges become, how do we fund those when we have lower, you know, when we have, you know, decreasing budgets in certain areas? You know, we've looked at pay for play. I mean, anyone who's got a child in athletics or band will realize either they're going to have to go into their pocket or they're going to have to find some, you know, somebody to make donations. I know every year, we spend quite a bit just to participate in those activities because there aren't financial resources to just pay for those, you know, on their own. They are dependent on, listen, I mean, sports, I mean, miscounts will tell you, many a night we've gone to football games and done, you know, handing out programs and done parking to fund whatever, you know, we need for that program, for that activity. I'm grateful to football because football has funded a lot of other programs that we have. Mr. God, I know you've done tennis, you know, you've coached tennis, you get really creative. The things what we do in order to have that, band, music, drama, all of those. I think we're always monitoring that to do that, and it's a challenge. It's a challenge when we, how do we meet that? And I think when I see Title IV, there's things that we can support, like professional development for some of those teachers and so forth. And that's where you're trying to support those behind the scenes. But to necessarily fund the program direct, I don't know where we would start and where we would end to a specific program.
And again, I'm not sure what specifically that they need that they're not getting. If the specific thing is, you know, we don't want to fundraise to take trips, we'd rather the school board pay for trips. Well, there's a lot of programs out there would rather the school board pay for your trips. But the truth is, a lot of activities fundraise so that they can enhance their program. It's not that we're not providing the curriculum content for the course itself. But they want to go a step above and beyond. And a lot of times, our course programs like to perform in Disney and they like to perform in New York and they like to go to other places and perform, and that's great. But that's not a cost that the school board budgets for. That's something that they raise funds for, that they go do that.
I know there was, and I was not here because I had to be at another event, but I did watch some of it. Things though, like whether there are awards that, you know, departments give or, you know, royalties for music or really what I think of as curriculum materials, are there not other areas within the budget?
If there's music that a music teacher needs that they're not able to get, if there's other avenues that we could, yes, we could use Title I money, we can also use instructional material dollars because that's part of their curriculum. Same thing we've done with band in the past. So there are other avenues, but again, everything starts with them developing a budget, what their need is and what they want a budget for, and then working with their principal and what their principal can't fund, their principal, if they see that as a need, would bring it to us. We start that process in February of every year during our budget. Everything's always zero-based budgeting. We start with zero, we work our way up, and then we get to where we're at.
And that discretionary budget, if I recall, also comes before the school advisory council as part of that stakeholder decision-making. And I think they actually are involved in the final approval before it's even done. So there's not only the staff development side of a budget, the administrative side, but then there's stakeholder involvement that has that conversation.
And bands are a good example. You know, we fund the bands money every year. We used to give them one block of money to buy band uniforms every so many years. The band directors went to their principals, they came to us and said they wanted to restructure that so that they got a little bit every year that could save it on their own. So we restructured that so they could use it for equipment and materials. So again, it's not, to say it's not being done is an inaccurate statement. But we just do not throw money at the wall and hope it sticks. People have a need, they need to do it the way, the same way we do it. The state just doesn't give us a ton of money and say, just go spend it wherever you want. We have to establish a budget, we have to account for everything that we do.
And Mr. Mullen, as I'm looking through some of these, and every program is a worthy program and every person will say, well, my program's the worthy program. And I know a lot of what you all have to do behind the scenes is filter through using data and using needs analysis to determine, okay, is that one we can fund? Where can we fund it? Is it, especially lately, if we, do we need to maintain, do we need to continue that program? Maybe we need to, it finally needs the sunset, it's served its purpose, it's no longer there. If something isn't funded in needs, where would we go get that money back? I mean, if it's not funded in Title IV, where, I mean, and we've said there was still a need, what would we have to do then?
We can look for funding in other areas. I mean, other operating, the operating budget, like I said earlier, it could be a capital expense. It depends on what we're trying to fund, what it is we're trying to specifically.
But if we lost money, I mean here, because we said.
Oh, if you took money out of Title IV, then something else in Title IV would, then whatever. If we kept that same level of service in there, we'd have to go into the operating fund and refund that.
So if we reduce it here, I mean, if we find another need, then we're going to have to reduce it somewhere else and impact another program.
To reduce what we're doing with it or we have to look for that funding from another category?
And that's where that need analysis comes in to then justify.
That's what they do.
Okay, that need is no longer necessary, this need is now risen to the top.
There's only so much money. So at the end of the day, what Ms. Douglas or Ms. Taylor's saying is true. What we look at is that data, and what we're trying to do is try to improve our performance and improve what we're doing. We're trying to get better every year, so we are a data-driven district. But in that data also includes survey information about the level of services that we're providing to make sure that we're doing that too.
And I agree with you wholeheartedly. You can't just throw a block of money out there and not know where it's going because it doesn't rely on data. I did, when I got stuck teaching drama, I was through high school for a couple of years because Jim Kelly answered. I boldly did Charlie Brown.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. I made a uniform part too. But I didn't get enough proceeds to pay off the royalties. So Craig Marlet went into the Pepsi fund and he said, I'll pay off the royalties. So I went to the principal and said, well, we're broke again, and so that. And I had to just take this opportunity to recognize all of the donations that we receive month after month in this community because the people go out and ask for help. You know, whether it's swim team or football or mostly it's the arts, if you look, but our donations are coming in and they're specific. It's for the basketball team or it's for drama, it's for arts, for this conference. So I think again, if you've got the arts, which we know we support, they've got to bring their data to their SAC committee, to their administration, then to us, and then ask for the funding. And I doubt that we would say no if it's reasonable. I know one year, we just paired up with Citrus High School, Crest River High School, and for every chorus and drama production, we agreed to bring our school to the other school. And we filled the cafeteria in both high schools that year because we just needed those proceeds. And so you just have to be creative, you just can't have your hand out and say, I want money.
And this is a tough year because with the reduced capacities, we're seeing it in sports, we're seeing it in athletics, we're going to see it in, with the arts. You know, businesses have been hit hard too. So there's not as many donations going to be coming rolling in. It's just one of those things we'll have to deal with as it goes. You know, there may not be, even in athletics, we're not taking as many trips or going as far distances. So it's the same with other things. We still want kids to have those experiences, but it may not be like it's been in past years where they're unlimited.
I'd still like to see the same procedure. If you're in this special program, you have your department head meetings, and you have your administrative meetings, and you go from there and then you go to the community. And then with data, then you can start to ask for this other money that slides in, district-wide money. If we start funding this one and that one, you don't have a big can of worms.
It creates an accountability. And it's, and I mean, it's what we've, I think, been successful at, you know, during the zero-based budgeting years, which since I've been on the board has been always the case. We basically build a new school every year at every school, and that means the budget's that way. I'm sorry, Dr..
No, I was just going to share, Mrs. Voight Taylor does meet with the art, rhythm, art music teachers as well, drama teachers, throughout the year, and she's our liaison. So I know this year she's met with them and they've asked for something the band teachers have called Smart Music. So she's working on that, trying to figure out if that's something they want to use because in this remote learning, that's something they felt like they could use with what they were doing. So she's working with them and trying to provide the funding. It was a need that came up due to this. I also know that the chorus went to the foundation and they did the, I think, three years in a row, they've done the chorus concert where they have all the schools, every school is involved in that event. And that was through the foundation sponsoring that. So I know Ms. Himmel's a big supporter of that, she's attended that event. And so I know that the arts are very important to this board as well as to our superintendent as well. But we just, we have to communicate and ask for those needs and then we'll work through them. Sorry to take that.
I mean, I think I'm good, I don't know how the other board members are, but I'll go through the rest of the presentation.
I appreciate your hard work.
Yeah, thank you. It was very valuable to go through and see.
Okay, so if you have any other?
If that were the needs assessment, if you would send it to all of us, just so that we have it, I think that'd be valuable.
Yep, I'll send it to you this afternoon. All right, thank you.
We are on our reopening plan update.
We just have a couple of items that I'm going to share with you regarding the reopening plan. So as you know, I came to you before and shared some items and said that at this meeting, we would have a few others. In a minute, Mrs. Voight Taylor's going to come up and share with you. She's had conversations with the chorus, it's funny we talk about the music, chorus, band, and drama folks. The teachers that are working out there came up with what we would consider, shared that with the executive team. And so we want to share that with you today regarding performances. But there were two other pieces that I'm going to share with you that we've already put out to principals. There was questions about students or student sport, like banquets, because at this time of the year, when there's different events and groups getting together, they want to celebrate, giving out awards and having a banquet. So we said students and schools may schedule those banquets as needed, but the food would need to be prepackaged or catered. They would need to think about the capacity of the venue to make sure it's following the same percentage it's used for athletic events if it's an in-school event. And they would also need to follow the Citrus Cares Plan protocols when they're having or hosting that event. If they go to an outside place, they need to follow whatever those rules and procedures are as well at that particular location. So if they rent a banquet hall somewhere that's outside of the Citrus County school system. But many of them use the gyms and cafeterias for those particular events. So they just need to follow whatever our protocols are for honoring students and recognizing them.
Dr. Hebert, then just for clarification, are we saying that we would allow people on campus? Because we haven't been, and in this situation, if you're talking about the use of the cafeteria, that would change some of that. So I just wanted to make sure.
And that event would have to be in the evening. So much like we've done, you know, for our sporting events, when we have those things, they're in a contained place. We know that they would have to follow the cleaning protocols before and after. So as we're allowing folks on campus for our sporting events, we would do it for this. But we are not going to do a banquet like at three o'clock in the afternoon. We need to make sure school is closed, the students have gone home, they come back. So it'd be a seven o'clock, six, seven, whatever time the school determines. But making sure the majority of the school population has exited the campus and then they host the banquet and they determine, the school principal would need to manage where that location would be.
That's reasonable, that's.
So the second, the second piece that I added was the parades. We'd ask questions about parades and we said student participation in parades may occur. about parades, and we said student participation in parades may occur if the group organization follows the protocols of the sponsoring event. So Crest River is hosting a parade, whatever their protocols are, our students would have to follow those particular protocols. If they say you have to march 12 feet away, then you gotta march 12 feet away. If you have to march, well, they should march one way, because they don't want to go back and forth. But whatever those protocols are, they would just need to follow those protocols of the sponsoring organization. And students would need to opt in. So we wouldn't require students, like in, my son was in band, and the director would always want all the students to go. So it was part of the, the class. And we said that it would have to be an optional event if students were gonna participate on a Saturday Christmas parade.
Are we gonna follow, because both cities have announced their Christmas parades already, and that involves our bands.
That would, and ROTC may also participate in that.
So are we gonna double check and make sure the protocols that they're requiring for the parade meet our requirements for our kids?
Ms. Count, they have committed to need hours revealed.
Or do, whichever is stricter?
Right, correct.
Got it.
Because they cannot, they can't weigh wrong what we're requiring, our bands. Because I know Ms. Lloydbiler's wrapped it down with our requirements.
Okay.
Any other questions for I and Ms. Lloydbiler coming to the, the chorus, band, and drama?
I have, I have one other thing that's been brought up by some of our teachers at all levels, elementary and middle and, and high school. I don't know why they feel that they can always come and talk to me, but I like it. Are we gonna have any kind of slowdown on the transfer from virtual back into brick and mortar this coming nine weeks? We've been letting kids come in almost weekly, and there's a little bit of a lag with campus and Skyward, and kids are already here, and there isn't iPad working, and, you know, there's a couple of days there. But could we say that we've given you nine weeks to make up your mind, and now we're gonna wait until midterm and the end of the nine weeks, and can we stop some of the transfer on a weekly basis?
Dr. Hebert and I have with the principals, and we talked about trying to slow that process down a little bit. So before a student can transfer back from brick and mortar to virtual, or from virtual back to brick and mortar, we've asked instead of the guidance, council has given them the thumbs up, that they have to talk to either the principal or one of the APs. They're trying to encourage some parents to say the best time for Sandy to come back would be at the end of the nine weeks. We've slowed it down a little bit.
Yeah.
But we've been given clear direction from the state, they want the same as possible as possible.
Yeah, and we've been hiking.
Well, we've been very flexible.
We've been very flexible.
But we've probably met with them, what, two, three weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago, because we've been hearing the same thing from the principals. So we've asked them to do that. January 1, we're still discussing if it'll be a solid nine weeks transfer back and forth. We're just kind of waiting to get halfway through this next nine weeks to see where we're going.
Yeah.
So we have tried to slow it down a little bit. I know it's not perfect, but it, because it is a problem when an elementary teacher gets five minutes today and tomorrow. Now what we did ask them to do, though, is that they come in on a Monday or a Tuesday. We told the schools to pick whichever day. Instead of all five of you coming in, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, if you're all going to like half their primary, they're gonna say, okay, you, your child can come back on Tuesday. Or we told them to pick their own day. Yeah, okay?
And then, you know, we're getting a little bit of, of crowding at, at brick and mortar.
Right.
Because of teachers, so.
And we're monitoring that.
I had a couple of them ask, are, are teachers that chose to volunteer to go virtual, are they gonna get first picked to come back to brick and mortar as, as we have?
It's gonna depend on the grade level, the content, and everything. So, you know, there may be some.
But are we posting, are we posting just to our virtual teachers first before we open it up to?
I believe they're having conversation, Mr. Adams and Ms. Dumas, when there's an opening, say, at a middle school. They'll say, we have something here, we know, arts reached out to the teachers to say, who's interested in coming back? And some have said, I want to do this forever, I love this. Some have said, I'll do it, let me know what you need, but I really want to be at this school. So then he watches it, and he says, I've got a third grade at this school, do you want it? And then sometimes it might not be in the order the teacher came in, but we're trying to make everybody happy.
Okay.
As we're bringing them back, as best we can.
Yeah, I think some of the worries were that they, we might hire those teachers from those group of county before we brought back.
Our goal is to hire our own and bring them back, and Ms. Swain is very involved with Mr. Adams and Ms. Dumas as they work through that.
Okay.
So the, the information about these banquets and, and, because then you kind of made it a little bit broader. So if a PTA wanted to do an event after school at an elementary school, is that the same as a banquet? Is that being allowed?
Well, I, I called it a student sport banquet. So I know that, like, if a, if a school, I, I'm looking at it as if they're having, say, a music club, and that music club wants to celebrate the work the students have done and give out awards at the end of the, you know, maybe by December, they would then pull together. So I, I guess maybe I need to be more clear on what, what is a banquet. But the principal has to approve what that is. So it wouldn't be a PTA sponsoring it, because it's, it's not, I mean, a PTA is a separate entity of the school, in my opinion. So I don't think it would be PTAs hosting events.
Is that kind of where it is? Because I'm thinking like a PTA, PTA event, Santa's cookies.
Right.
Is it an entire school where, let's say, an activity group is a cohort group, and is already probably exposed to one another?
And this really.
I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to understand that that was.
And those events. But I know there are some elementaries that do running clubs, they do music clubs, they do those kinds of things, that I didn't want to say, well, it's only for middle and high school, you can't celebrate your kids. I thought like we need to keep it to K-12 if they do that. But it really isn't about opening up, because then it becomes, anybody can, you know, I mean, our PTAs and other events then can do whatever they want to. And we've really tried to limit that as much as we can.
Okay. So your focus right now is on the sports and the clubs to have a banquet or an award, is that reasonable?
Right. That's really what was asked. And originally, the plan was, we were gonna wait till the spring. But we know that many groups finish at this time of the year, and we thought then we're gonna be backlogged if we say no banquets until the spring. So we thought, well, if we're doing it in small segments, and they want to work through that process, the principal would be a part of that, manage that, that then that would be what that was for.
Okay. And you said also, if they were assigned to have the banquet or the event off-campus, at say, a restaurant.
Yes.
Then they could follow whatever guidelines are there.
They would have to follow those guidelines as well as our guidelines as well. So it, it doesn't mean let's go and all sit around a round table. We're, we're asking people to still social distance in those things, but, but whichever guidelines are the stricter of the two. Ours are probably more stricter than a restaurant, but they could certainly go to those and, and use those.
But our guidelines, you said, I mean, obviously, they can't be prepackaged at the restaurant, right?
Well, there's still cater. It's not, it's not all of us getting together in potluck. That's what we don't want. We don't want anybody bringing in potluck.
So if they want to order pizza?
They could do that.
They could do that at the school?
They could do that at the school as well. And follow, they could still have a banquet at the school, they have the pizza delivered. So they could do either prepackaged or cater. We just can't have people bringing in their crock pots of food, cooking them at home, as I know people have done in the past.
I think we've had activities where, like, there's pre, you know, pre-game activities where they are eating that type going on now. So what you're saying is, but hopefully they're going on now, meeting the current criteria. That would be the expectation, I think, of, of, of the district and administration. You're just extending that to say, where, you know, it could include.
It could. We're trying to give some flexibility to some of the, the groups that, that want to meet. That's what we're trying to do, and give them opportunities. They want to celebrate the work. I know the swim teams have finished, I know football's gonna be finishing. Some, some of those fall sports and, and groups that meet would want to get together. I've heard of some little music clubs at the elementary school that may want to meet and say, you've done a great job this, you know, fall, we want to celebrate your work. So that was what the.
Clubs haven't given you green light right now.
I have sent this out to principals. I told them I was sharing it at the workshop today along with Ms. Lloydbiler's information. Once we finish today, we're gonna send it out and say we're ready to roll. But they know they can start thinking about planning that. That's, that was the goal.
Just to clarify for, for catering, I know we have several swim markets at high school level, and we had culinary arts classes cook for us. Is that still considered catering and not?
I mean, I, my, my guidance to the principals would be yes, because they have to follow safe-serve guidelines. They're, they're taught in that. But if you said the moms in the group, and the dads, and the grandmas are gonna bring in food, that doesn't count.
No, culinary class.
Because they have to follow, and that's the purpose of doing the, the cater food is, is that they follow safe-serve guidelines. So that'd be the purpose.
All right. Before you do, I just wanted to follow up on, on clarification. The, as we're scale, the scalability of, from our brick and mortar to our virtual and back and forth, at the secondary level, specifically the high school level, I think we have, we have teachers that are on campus that are doing a lot of that learning. I'm assuming that that is getting scheduled so that they're, we don't necessarily have to hire a new person, it's more of readjusting those schedules. There are some cases where we have other, a lot of those teachers are tied, I thought, to a school.
They are.
So.
But some are tied to multiple schools. We have some.
That's what I, that's my question.
Schools because of their schedule. So when we collapse classes and move that teacher, it's a big domino effect. So that's where we all have to meet together, and Ms. Dumas has done a great job of facilitating that work so that we can have those conversations about that.
The, the question was brought up, I think Ms. Count said, and, and Ms. Himmel was clarifying. I know we're under our plan that we submitted to the state, and the state approved basically that, and partly, and mandated that we have to have flexibility. That, I thought, ends at the end of this first semester. Is that correct? That, that our reopening plan that we submitted to the state that mandated that, I thought, ends at the, at the end of this semester? And is that correct? Or is that reopening plan for the entire school year?
I think there's a conversation going on at the state, because when we talked to Commissioner Corcoran on our FADS call, he was talking about spring, you know, the testing in the van and all that, that business is as usual, and that they were still discussing anything that sunsets December 31st.
And, and I, my thinking of that was, I know we are going out of our way to be flexible, and that's been challenging. And so if that did sunset, that required flexibility, one, maybe we should be articulating that, so that second semester, you've got to make a commitment by a specific date, because we don't have, we aren't required to have the same level of flexibility to try and get some of these kids that are, you know, that are kind of going back and forth right now. That would self-limit that.
And, and I will say, I think I read the executive order, and the governor, I think in his indication when I read it, was thinking, oh, we'd have most of our kids back, back in brick and mortar. We're still sitting at 3,200 in virtual. Now, we started 42, so we've dropped to 32, but we still have a fair number of students in our virtual program at this time in November's next week. So I don't know if his intention, when he wrote that executive order, if things, and again, he's got to monitor what he determines, whether or not we'll be able to make those changes or not. He may continue that for the second semester. I don't know the answer to that.
I do realize the next nine weeks, as challenging as this is, where I feel like we are locked into that reopening plan. But it does start to get into that question of, can we be more restrictive going into the second semester, so that we, we do have less of that movement in the second semester?
And, and we, as a district, I know, would like to be more restrictive and say to families, you've experienced the virtual, those that have, you've been in brick and mortar, think about what you would like to do, and let's make a commitment from January till, till May, till the end of the year. So we have had those conversations, that's something we'd like to be able to put out there to families. We've not done that yet, but we've had that conversation.
And I think we've got to remember too, that a lot of the virtual decision was based on the COVID. And that's still here. It's not, you know, there's only, I think, 17 people under the age of 65 that have died in Citrus County. But that was still a major decision for the families that chose virtual. And unless that thing really subsides, I love, I'm getting compliments on the dashboard, and people are watching it, so that gave them a sense of security in brick and mortar. But I think we, I think we're still gonna have to be a little flexible come January, unless it's really.
But I, I think the governor, this is my thinking, that he was thinking, we'd have a, a large number of kids in the virtual innovative learning, and by this time, they'd all be back in brick and mortar. I don't know if he really thought, and I'm gonna tell you, we're not an anomaly. Many other districts are in the same boat as far as comparison-wise. I've been looking at their data, number of students still sitting in a virtual or innovative learning environment. So we'll just have to monitor that and see. So, Ms. Lloydbiler?
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Almost eaten.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Thank you. So, as Dr. Hebert shared, I met with the directors at the high school of music programs, band, choral, and drama, and talked about where we are in our opening plan. But really, our conversation was focused on inside performances. Okay? So as we've been encouraging virtual performances of any type, we've encouraged also so huge outside performances. But then what are some protocols and measures we could put in place to allow some inside performances for our performing arts programs? So what I've given to you are some general guidelines, which are ready, many of these were already in place for our return to marching band. They also replicated several of the.
Bless you.
God bless you. Some of the safety measures and protocols that were in place for athletics, for our return to athletics. So the first page pretty much replicates some of the information that we had, that some already practices we had in place. The requirements that are there are very general to all of our programs, in that we still want to make sure that the directors and administrators are monitoring, and the safety protocols that are in place, that is their responsibility, that we ask them to remind students of them on a daily basis. Ultimately, our goal is to decrease the potential exposure to respiratory droplets. And so that's part of the, that's the reason for all the social distancing and the mask requirements. We have the point of emphasis too, of still documenting, documenting, and if somebody has symptoms or is not feeling well, they don't participate. So those were, so the first page really is a lot of, a lot of those same protocols, what we already had in place. The limitations on gathering, gatherings, as did with athletic programs and with our return to marching band, we had the number, the limitations on how many people could be present, counting the directors, inside and outside. So looking at going, moving forward to perhaps some inside performances, we're just saying that for our performing arts programs, that we will replicate whatever the, the limitations are for athletic programs. So if in a stadium, there is a 25% capacity, then these programs would be the same thing. Inside, whatever it is, they would do the same. So they would follow the same, if we moved to 35%, we're 35%. That's what we, we will look.
I think that's what we're at.
Yes, 35. I was just giving you the.
No, that's fine.
So. Yeah, that was, because we didn't want to put a set number in here.
Yes.
Because then we felt like then we'd be coming back too, say. So we said, all right, we're just gonna replicate whatever it is, if it, as that increases, we'll follow that as well. As far as facility cleaning.
Can I ask you about the last bullet on limitations on gatherings?
Sure.
Report to rehearsals and performances in performing attire.
Yes.
They sometimes will have three or four rehearsals without costumes being ready.
Right. We're hoping that, that as much as possible, and we can say as much as possible, that they, we report, we're trying to minimize the dressing room uses and the changes. But if they have to, you'll see, as we get to the backside and talk about it.
They just have rehearsal for blocking and things like that, then they could come in street clothes, and then for dress rehearsal, come dressed.
Correct.
For performances, come dressed.
Yes, and that really, and dress rehearsals, that, and those, for any of those, when they can report in gear, already ready dress, they're there, so that we can minimize the change, the changing. Facility cleaning still would be in place, like we're doing already throughout our school. Instrument and equipment, we went ahead and moved that from, you know, we substituted terms like props, other materials that might be used, to make sure that we're not sharing them, limit sharing if possible. Also, no sharing of personal items, creating a plan for how the items will get, you know, from one area to the next. So from the classroom, one person would be assigned, this is the prop that you need to take to stage, it's your prop, you're responsible for, you're the only one handling it, going there. So trying to put in some of those safety protocols and plans in place. So trying to put in some of those safety protocols and plans in place to help take care of that. At the same time, making sure that prior to students arriving, the directors have designated a space, that here is where all your personal belongings go. I know I've been in many of these schools where kids just collaborate them all on a table and saying, nope, you have a defined area for your materials. So.
And then they have to find the one that has the phone that's ringing.
Correct, correct. So we've talked about marking off the space for that. Hydration, again, same thing, bringing your own, having their own water bottles, not using water fountains. And then, again, adhering to our volunteer staff is only for after hours. They must, those volunteer staff does need to be approved through the Citrus County School District. So those are the general things. On the back. Yes.
Before you leave, volunteer staff. I talked with a gentleman who volunteers, and he's missing our kids.
I know.
And I said, honey, just as soon as you can be there, I'll shout it from the rooftop. He was so sad. He wants to get back with the kids.
Yeah. A lot, I'm sure there are a lot of volunteers that way.
There are a lot in that community.
And we have, we've been having some calls come in about volunteer training. At the same time as they are interested, they also recognize the concern, and some of them are concerned about their own safety and health and want to make sure, you know, that they're following where we are in COVID and monitoring the pandemic and what gives them access to be in.
Just need to share that. Thank you.
Before I go on to that next page, are there any other questions of these general sections?
The only thing I was going to say, Ms. Count's brought it up, I think, on the limitations and gatherings, the student recording and rehearsal. We just talked about having parades, and I'm excited about that. So I, but that does bring up, are we, you know, a lot of times I think about bands, those costumes are not issued at the, at the, at the middle school level, they're often issued to the student for the season. But I think at the high school level, they're not.
Okay.
Have we talked, I mean, it doesn't, it's just maybe a conversation you need to have with the music of, what is going to be the solution for that?
For them to have their uniforms.
Well, either they need to have them beforehand, or there may be some accommodations. I'm sure you all will be able to figure that out, but it just, it kind of stuck out to me as we talked about, you know, parades.
That's a good point.
It's, again, I think it's, you know, you've been a band parent doing those things.
Well, one of the things I know they have also looked at is doing more of a, I call it a casual uniform that they will wear. So in the Christmas parade, they might wear jeans and a school shirt and a Santa hat. And so it may be, they're not going to wear their full Christopher High School, La Canto citrus, uniform. They'll wear something else that they can still, they'll decorate their instrument, they can do those types of things. So I know those are conversations that the principals have had, because they're concerned about if they have to pay to have the uniforms dry cleaned, it's very costly. So those are good, good conversations.
I was about to go there too, that they, that, you know, we will have a conversation to make sure it's on their mind, but I would agree that casual, whether it's school shirts, spirit, that that could be an option for them as well. So. Any other questions on this front page? So then, Christine Ender from Citrus High School, she also sent over information from Mount Verde Academy from Lake County, who is a arts, deals with a lot of the performing arts. And she said, here's some other safety protocols. And so that was a great groundwork for us to have conversations with each of the programs. So some of this comes from them as well. Part of our conversation initially was about, okay, so if we want to do inside performances, how do we handle the audience coming in? You know, we want to try and make sure we're avoiding and not allowing everybody congregating in the lobby, waiting for the doors to open. So we want to make sure the communication is very clear. We won't open until 15 minutes before the show. People will go directly to seats. We also, you know, wanted to make sure, we said, okay, we'll have, in the audience, having these seating assignments similar to what we do here, so that parents go exactly to where they need to as well. Drinking fountains will not be available, you know, the same, same safety protocols that we have in place at schools as well. Also, that tendency of performers meeting with families, members and friends, they all congratulate, you know, saying, nope. No, not before, not after, you know, we're just saying, you're going to come in, do your performance, and leave. So we wanted to make sure we had all of those issues covered as well. Safety, so we talked about, okay, lobby, then we talked about, okay, what do we do for the safety protocols that we need to have in place for our performers? So for our performers, again, trying to follow our social distancing and requiring masks to, while, during rehearsals and during performances backstage, before they come on stage, before they come on to perform. Anytime that they're waiting, you know, in the queue, waiting to go on, that they would have their masks on, that our directors, assistant managers, our technicians, so forth, they would wear their masks at all times. There's no reason for them not to. Performers and crew will not interact, again, we have it there too, performers and crew will not interact with the audience before or after the show. We also then said, okay, so that's some of the protocol, how do we handle the rest of backstage safety measures? And that's where we get to the dressing room and set up, sort of what you had come to. We know there will be times where they may have to do that, so we want to try and make sure that there is assigned areas, that there are cleaning products that will be available, that can be used. Again, encouraging me to use the masks, and then maintaining social distancing as a way to enter the stage. And then, then we went to, okay, microphones. How do we handle that? That's another piece. You know, we talked about sheet music earlier and those different resources that are used for performances. Basically, we would, if a body mic is necessary, students would be responsible for putting it on themselves. They would use the same one the entire time. That we would make the students be responsible for picking up their own mic, making sure, obviously, that we're cleaning before and after. And then, before and after, and then using area mics where we can, where their students aren't even touching them, which was a lot of our choral programs do that anyways. There's an area mic that picks up very well the sound. So those were the considerations and the discussions, and again, the both, the band directors, our drama directors, our choral directors, they were wonderful. They all participated, all gave input as to what they felt were considerations that would make it possible for them to have some inside performances.
Any word from, now, I know this is for our schools, but is there any word from CF or Curtis Peterson on any of these protocols that might be acceptable to them opening up?
We can follow.
Curtis Peterson is ours. Actually, that's also been an offer that's been made from La Canto High School that any of the schools can use Curtis Peterson, which will allow for 35% of the audience in Curtis Peterson looks a lot different than in cafeteria, so they've made that, we've made that available to them as well, which will help with that. They.
Thank you, La Canto.
Yes, so Mr. Dumas was the one who offered it, so that for any of the programs, if they want to, they make their campus available for them as well.
I saw this, I think it was this last weekend, I got so excited seeing a video that was on social media showing Breeze performing, and how exciting it was. I mean, I got all excited. And the kids, they, you know, they were distanced, you know, six feet apart, although to me, it looked like they were just occupying the whole area in a good way. And they were singing and excited, and the kids were excited, and I was just so thrilled to see that. And just kudos, kudos to, you know, to John and Adele and Breeze and the administration for making that happen. I thought that was just super.
I know that some have already planned a winter concert, but without an audience, you know, they were trying. But now that they have this permission, they're like, ooh, well, maybe, you know. But they're trying to, you know, trying to do both, do virtual, but also have this option that, okay, our performers want to perform. This is their passion. We want to support that, the arts as well.
Curtis Peterson in particular lends itself to being able to offer audiovisual streaming. I mean, it's not, you know, it's not as simple, but it's certainly more conducive there. Is that something too, maybe some will be considered for concerts, because, you know, for those that would like to attend, that don't feel comfortable attending and so forth?
Yeah, they're trying to explore many different options to make that.
And, you know, really, we might want to remember our hometown ticketing system could permit us to even sell streaming and, you know, revenue that a little bit if we wanted to do that.
Right now, they just want to get on.
They just want to get there. I don't play.
They want to get on stage and perform. They want to.
So I know a lot of our elementary schools do programs during school day, and obviously, this isn't meant for that. But so if an elementary school, we want to transition to an after-school program, obviously, it's the same guidelines.
Correct. We started with the high school, because there was the biggest demand, but this would be the same protocol for any inside performances. That would be do what we can to follow these measures. Do you have any input on any of that? Is there any clarification that you need?
I want you to left untouched.
Well, the 35% could be an issue with, you know, a priority. I mean, how would that look for parents or family members? You know, that's going to be up to the directors to.
Figure out how are we going to handle a ticketing system very similar to what we're already doing for athletics? We might have to do something, you know, look at that type of measure, or this is the cap of how many tickets we can sell. This is how many, you know, we will do. We did talk about doing multiple performances, but then again, then that's multiple people, multiple thing between and all of that. So it might be increased by one or two, or that option of using Curtis Peterson to allow for a greater.
And again, our ticketing system would allow for some prioritizing, Mr. Dodd, so it could be used to, you know, to give that code out first to, you know, let's say, senior families, and then, you know, and those families and so forth. So there are some options there, I think.
Sure. And or, as you said, if we're going to do our own ticketing system, starting with our own students and go down the level here. Here's how many per family, start from there and go, and then see how many we have left. Any other questions?
Great work.
Thank you.
Hi. If I am reading the agenda correctly, if we have no further business to come before the board, our workshop stands adjourned. Good day.
Those protocols, I understand.
Good to go.
I did that on purpose.
Yeah, you're cool.
Good job. Buster, good standing.
Thank you.